Good evening and welcome to the Sohegan Cooperative School Board meeting. It's October thirtieth at six o'clock. Before we get started, two announcements. One, we did have a board member who did resign from Mont Vernon. And based on RSA six seventy-one code three, the the board of selection from Mont Vernon will be selecting the replacement as we only have one other member from Mont Vernon. And they're not able to make the selection themselves. So it goes to the board of selectmen and they've already been contacted, put a notice out. And I believe we're going to have a meeting on November fifteenth to select interview and select.
November eighteen.
November eighteen. Thank you for that. Perfect. That's what fifteen became. Thank you. Also went out as an announcement via Facebook and I don't know if it's on the SAU page, but we have two community council members we are looking for, one from Amherst, one from Mont Vernon. We did put the announcement out to have people send in letters if they're interested and at our next meeting we will select replacements for each of those as well. And I had did have somebody who lives in Mont Vernon added up on the Mont Vernon Facebook site to make sure more people saw it up there. So we will get started with our public input. We will take public comment from people in the room first. And then we will go to our online guests, which do have the procedures added in the chat space. So if anyone in the room would like to have public input, please come forward. And introduce yourself.
Feel like I'm so far back. Hopefully you don't mind. Thanks Stephanie for allowing me some time to just give you a quick chat. My name's Will Lute. I live at Three School Street in Amherst. And a little bit of my background, I'm the Chair of our Heritage Commission within the Amherst. And I'm a community council member for Amherst as well. And I also worked senior project. So both my wife and I are big supporters of Sohegan. And just something has come, I have an observation I just would like to share with you. As you know, forums were started back up again this year. There's been two this year. And they're really quite interesting. I really enjoy them. And I recommend that if you have time, go to them. I know Maya over there is on the sophomore here the report. But they're really interesting because it's really neat to see sort of the maturation between ninth grade and tenth or twelfth grade. I mean, it's amazing how different those students are. But something came up this past month. I just want to, would like to share an observation and three of the four grades forums, I think there was freshmen. Maybe the freshmen didn't do it, but the sophomore juniors and seniors. Whenever they had their time to brainstorm what they were looking for this year in, you know, projects or things to go forward through community council. And three of the four stated that they would like to see more field trips, more experiential field training, learning opportunities. And to me, that harps back to winter session. You know, we don't do winter session anymore. And I think it would be a good thing to reinstitute winter session. Maybe not as full-blown as what it once was. But I sort of called a winter session late. Where you maybe go start it, you know, this year or next year, just start it late, get it the you know, get the groundwork set. And do some things local because there's a lot of local things that are in interest to the students. And you know, and local, I mean, you know, New Hampshire, Boston, Portsmouth. And I would just recommend that a study be implemented either at the community council level or at the board. And that's why I came to you tonight because I think this is sort of a board issue for you all to take up vice community council. And I just wanted to make you aware that that three of the four grades this last month recommend that they further that. So I'd be willing to help out as much as I could, but it's your call and we'll take that and talk about.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anybody else in the room from public input?
Other S A S D too?
No, that's for later. Okay. We do have someone online. So we can promote the person online and if you can just state your name and town of residence. Yes, your camera does need to be on.
Oh yeah, that should it?
Can you see me now?
Yes, you can. Thank you.
All right. Howard Brown, Mount Vernon. And I agree with everything that Will just said and anybody that had students that went through Sohegan, the the trips were a big part of that, their learning experience. So I would agree with everything that Will just said. But the reason why I raised my hands was being a Mount Vernon residence, I knew they had an opening for Sonny's position on the school board. And I just found out today that there's a couple of people that I can reach out to, which I will. And once I reach out to them, I'll get ahold of Stephanie and let her know what I found out.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody else online who would like to? I don't see any other fans, so we will go on with our agenda. In the consent agenda, we have draft minutes and we have an unanticipated revenue. Which I just want to give a big shout out to Parker's Precision Fluids Robotics Division for their ten thousand dollar donation for, to our first robotics. So we greatly appreciate your support. Yeah, it's very cool. The kids do a great job and these donations truly, truly help. So are there any questions or comments on the draft minutes or unanticipated revenue to be approved?
If we just also add in, it's actually Chris Price who donated. This was a reward that he received at work. And he elected to actually say, hey, you know what? There's a great location for it. And he actually chose the Sohegan High School Robot. A big shout out to Chris.
For donating, yeah.
Exactly.
Yes.
It's awesome.
Any other questions? And does John have anything regarding?
No, I'm good. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, John. Can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Second, I should main second end. Oh, John, I never did this in the beginning. That's my fault. John, can you please say if you were alone and whether you were able to, whether you why, not why, but you were not able to be.
I am in fact alone and I was unable to attend tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. So since John is online, we need to do a roll call vote. So Mr. Glover?
Glover, yes.
Thank you very much. Reports received. I just want to reiterate on the some of the enrollment, mostly the achievement data and principles report. These are informational unless we have some clarifications that we would like made on the reports. Dana will be here next month. So this gives us a month to kind of digest the information in the reports. And we can ask more specifics, but if there are any clarifications, please go ahead and ask us this evening.
So this will be part of the agenda next month, not for the consent agenda, part of the discussion agenda.
So yeah, so exactly. Want to give people time to look through things and digest all the information.
And so are questions for that? Do you want us to forward them to you and then you're going to forward them off?
That might be a great idea.
Thank you.
That would be a great idea if you could do that. But any other clarification questions? Or any questions on or comments on facilities or the truckers reports? Open data?
See, we're going to have some big trucks around. We're going to have big trucks, big cranes, working on the rooftop unit. So I don't want you to be surprised. Oh my gosh, there's big trucks.
There's big trucks here. Do we have data? Do we have the data?
Big trucks.
Yeah.
I don't.
Okay. All right. I'm sure Will. Big trucks.
And I've written board notes by doing this in-house.
He does a great job maintaining our buildings. We appreciate it. All right. So we'll move on from that. Community council updates. We're going to have Maya give us an update. And since she is in the fall play coming up, she's not been home yet. So we're going to have her give a report and then scoot her out of here.
Thank you. First off, council made about five hundred dollars on the popcorn stand at Closewater House. Spent very well on that. We have passed the defining SAC roles proposal. Basically, this proposal gave a description of the student activities coordinators roles. There's two of them. Previously, there was no description of their roles in the bylaws. So this kind of just refreshed that and clearly stated the roles in the bylaws. Council also has voted to fund one HOBIE Scholarship again this year. HOBIE is a youth leadership conference in the state of New Hampshire. Four sophomores, about four sophomores go each year. Students nominated by their teachers and they get selected by committee. And then we have currently won the scholarship for one of those students. And I believe the cost about this year was three hundred thirty dollars. But Tim Patrol came to us and asked if we'd be willing to fund it again and we have already budgeted for it. So we just voted on that and it passed. We are in the works of confirming a council meeting at the Mount Vernon Village School on December second. I think we're currently just waiting for confirmation from the principal at the school. As Will said, we did have forums last week. We had brainstorming sessions because we didn't have a new proposal in the works at the time. And we informed the students about the SAC bylaws proposal. Some things that the grades talked about that I think we're highlighting was safety during elections. A lot of students, I believe during the junior and senior forums, talked about how they don't like how sometimes we have school during elections. And that they don't feel very safe bringing other people into school during school hours. Some other things that were talked about were honors credits and field trips as Will has already mentioned. As well as Division One roundtables. This past meeting, which was the twenty eighth, we started to discuss the ring five request to peel. And we will continue discussing that at our next meeting, which is in two weeks on, I believe the eleventh. And then school wide news, the fall play is coming up. The performances are on November fourteenth, fifteenth.
Please come watch. Yeah, it's a good show. Yeah. Can you say the name of the?
Yes. Yeah, it's the Seussification of Romeo and Juliet.
So it's good for like elementary kids as well?
All ages.
Any questions for Maya?
Can you tell us a little bit more what the discussions were regarding around Division One roundtables?
Um, yes, I can pull up here. I know that I think this was mainly talked about during the junior forum. I think a lot of them expressed their interest in like reworking it and reframing it. I think that some people had said like, if we only made it a one-year long thing and that it kind of felt a little bit dragged out. And that they did a lot of like what felt like busy work and that it could have been condensed a little more. Yeah.
That's great. That's very helpful. Thank you. Other questions? Don't see any other questions. So yes, thank you. I mean, well, it's good to hear this because, you know, safety during elections is something that is talked about at different times. At what point do we have the kids in and do we not? And it's good for them to observe that people are voting and taking, you know, advantage of that. But yeah, I think there's a, there's a balance. So it's good to hear as well. All right. Thank you for good. Thank you very much. Jim, on the day of the election? Outside, yeah.
So in, I mean, March eleventh, there isn't any school. What slid by us was the and, and we moved, if you remember, we moved it to a half day. We reduced the risk. Might say in our discussion is as much as we can, we are not, it's not that school unelect. That was a very late, decent, it was right after the start of school to cancel a day. So we bumped it to a half day. And we appreciate the feedback from the youths.
Yes.
And we also have the school resource officer present during the day.
Yeah, I, I think it was because when they were outside and crossing between, there is a lot. Yeah. So
And Mr. Coughlin was, we, even when I was interim superintendent, he was very passionate about continuing school the day so he could see civics in action. But he understood time change. And sometimes it's just if we can, it's hard to have people in school trying to do this business when there's but he understood, but he was pretty passionate about keeping school late.
Well, and I do wonder if there are differences looking at a, you know, our march voting, when we're voting on school issues, selectmen, school board members is different than like a presidential election year, which is outside outsiders are around.
We get a lot of feedback, even if it's just a local.
So it's a good thing we should be, or someone should be looking at the Division One roundtables. Is that something that we do? Is that something that could be cast onto Dana? Is that something community council? I think Dana is already looking, they're, they're already looking at Division One. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. So it's already being looked at.
The feedback that they had specifically.
We can ask that next, because I think it's an valid question to make sure.
To make sure, right. I mean, if they're feeling, particularly with that being the, you know, like this is busy work. And I mean, you know, that's important feedback perhaps.
So yes, let's have to write that down. Okay. Budget presentation. Amy, we have draft two in our.
We have draft two. In assembly. Steve's going to project. So tonight we're presenting draft two of the Sohegan budget. As we know, we had not yet received the health and dental rates from Health Trust at our last meeting. And then projected a ten percent increase for health and a five percent increase for dental. In draft one, we have since received the health and dental rates from Health Trust, which unfortunately were higher than ten percent for health and those rates are now reflected in draft two. Dental rates did come in at five percent, five percent as projected. So the FY twenty-six draft operating budget is now a three point three percent increase for seven hundred four thousand one hundred fifty-nine dollars over the FY twenty-five adopted budget. The difference between the FY twenty-five adopted budget and the FY twenty-six default is one point five percent for three hundred twenty thousand eighty-three dollars. And the difference between the FY twenty-six default and the FY twenty-six proposed is three hundred eighty-four thousand seventy-six dollars for one point eight percent. So just again, as a reminder, this calculation excludes the special warrant articles that were passed in FY twenty-five. To give the analysis. So for budget assumptions, as stated, we received the rate changes for health and dental. This year, Health Trust is not providing a guaranteed maximum rate at budget time and the actual rate in the spring, but is instead providing the actual rate now. So the rates were also provided by plan. And our thirteen point three percent for the access blue five, sixteen point eight percent for the set of service H R A, twelve point four percent for the luminos H S A and the five percent for dental. We discussed the New Hampshire retirement rate change and staffing changes were discussed last month. But happy to revisit those issues at the end of the presentation if there are questions.
There's a group of question on that. One of these plans is like getting grandfather out.
Right. Which one is that sunset? Yes.
The access.
Access.
So current people can stay with no new.
Yes. So the major change from draft one to draft two was the increase in health and dental. We also received our new workers comp and unemployment comp rates from Primex. There was also a correction that was needed to support, to the support staff salary line. As part of the most recent P V C agreement, there were two additional days that were added to the school calendar. So we needed to add those wages for the support staff to support the teachers on those days. We received updated rates from Primex also for our property liability insurance for FY twenty-six. And there's a small four hundred and seventy-nine dollar cost for a software license for the laminator for the live. The late ad. So projected electricity costs were updated based on our newly negotiated agreement. So we felt comfortable reducing this line by ten thousand dollars. The biggest reduction is from a variety of furniture lines. So for the last year or so, we've been carrying approximately sixty thousand dollars for new replacement furniture in the capital reserves while we sorted out the costs and construction for the Skylight projects. So the first Skylight project, formerly phase two, we have now officially renamed it to phase one to to help in confusion.
Good news.
Yeah. Was completed and actually came in under budget. In addition, we're very close to receiving a price for the second Skylight project with a solution that we also expect to be under budget. So for these reasons, we're comfortable releasing those funds that were originally earmarked for furniture to actually be used for furniture and are able to remove these items from the operating budget. But we'll talk more about this when we get to the facilities review section, but it is a major shift from draft one to draft two. So this is the familiar slide that shows the budget broken down by the Sohegan Advisory Finance Committee categories. Has changed due to the health dental increases that affects most of the categories, I think except for transportation. The other major change is the decrease in the curriculum budget from the removal of the furniture. So the only change from draft one to draft two for the default calculation is the increase in contractual dollars and benefits. Which increased the difference between the current year FY twenty-five budget and the FY twenty-six default. There were some health and dental benefits for a vacant addition that is a P V C addition that were included, the proposed, but not in the default. So we needed to make that correction from draft one to draft two. I love the slide in as a reminder of what was cut from the budget prior to draft one. And then also updated to include the removal of the furniture, but making note that this is still being funded just from a different source. So proposed items at risk, this did not change significantly with the exception of the furniture from the curriculum budget. And the total difference between the FY twenty-six default and the FY twenty-six proposed is three hundred eighty-four thousand seventy-six dollars for one point eight percent. So now we're going to do a review of the reserves and long-term facilities plan. So no big changes to this slide, except I did update the school maintenance fund to include some interest income. The recommended contribution request to the recreational revolving fund needs to be determined as we still need to have some time to discuss with the boards athletically. So we will plan to have that meeting and have a recommendation for the board as part of the draft reading presentation. So the long-term facilities project and funding plan, this is the familiar chart that we've used for a few years. So just as a reminder, the details of this plan are included in the budget file of the table of contents page. You can click on and see Roger's long-term facilities plan for all the districts. So as I said, phase one of the Skylight project is complete. Then phase two planned for, for next year as well as the furniture replacement. It's likely that they'll be able to make some purchases earlier, however. So then in addition to the other projects that are listed for FY twenty-six. So we included projected interest in the balance for FY twenty-five, but not going forward. We likely will be earning interest income. And this specifics of that are provided to us monthly from the trustees of the trust fund. And I add this to the funding plan periodically. The facilities plan stretches to FY twenty, FY thirty-three. And as you can see, we're able to maintain at least three hundred thousand dollars in the account for an unanticipated emergency. So in summary, the warrant articles are listed with the exception of a dollar amount for the recreation revolving fund. All of the special warrant articles are being proposed to be funded from the FY twenty-five on a sudden fund balance if funds are available. So finally, the budget review process and next steps are included here. So so far, the advisory finance committee has met twice and had all of their subcommittee meetings with S A U and building administration and board representatives. There are a few unanswered questions in the budget file, one that will take some additional time for the Director of Human Resources at the S A U to complete, but we did let the advisory finance committee member know that we needed some extra time to complete that question. And I did see there were a few questions that were just added late this afternoon. So we'll get those answered in the next day or so. Draft three will be presented next month and will include revenue projections and tax impact estimates. The budget file has been updated with draft two. There's a tab that shows the variances from draft one to draft two and the personal tab is also updated. I'll take any questions. There were a number of questions that were input and answered and Dana did some, some great work on a recent question about really revolving around the master schedule and the humanities department. So she, she did a really nice spreadsheet.
Yeah. So I saw the question.
Yeah. So you can take a look at that. I think she just put that in there.
So let me, let me ask a question. In the past, we had a, we had a workshop that we dedicated just like one evening that we talked about just the budget. So it didn't take up meeting time. Realized we've not actually scheduled on here. Question is, we want to take the time and otherwise we're going to take the time now. Do you guys want to go through each of the budget files, like not all of it, but each of the category areas now and see what questions you have? Or would we rather schedule a workshop? Just dig into the. So I know, I think there's going to be questions.
We prefer workshop. It's our time for us and then prepare to engage in that.
Yeah. Yeah. So if we can look at that another evening.
And maybe I can schedule it to Mike and Chelsea to.
And maybe I can schedule it the. And maybe I can schedule it the next even. I don't know if it's the timing works for everybody in the next finance committee meeting on the nineteenth, because there are any meeting and it could be all of us together, but that's just November nineteenth. And that would not be another night, but it's a night already scheduled. The Tuesday evening.
Send out an invite for it.
I think that then we can go through like we normally do when it won't take up. A meeting.
So Mike and Chelsea will get that out.
Yeah, I got it in my notes.
Okay.
Get it posted and all that.
Okay.
Uh, just a comment on that, if I may.
Yes, John.
Uh, I would, I agree with having a workshop. And if we can dovetail into the finance advisory meeting, that'd be great, but I wouldn't want to foist ourselves upon them if they had uh, some agenda that is inconsistent with what we would want to do during a workshop. That's all. I would want to check with them and make sure that that they're okay with us dovetailing into their meeting for that purpose.
It's a partnership. We can talk to Jeannie and I'm sure that they would welcome time to have the boy or join them at that meeting. But I will, we'll double check it. We'll get the invite out if she's comfortable with it and go from there.
Great. I would hope so as well. I just don't want to assume it.
Yeah. Amy, can I do, I do want to ask one question. The property liability insurance increased fifty, almost fifty six hundred dollars. Any information on that? That's a big increase for one year. That's just our district.
Yeah.
It's actually normal right now. Replacement service, so actually, yeah. This is the inflation piece that we asked you to work on two years ago. You don't start recording and it's just showing up.
So it's, yeah, just everyone needs to be aware of it. Yep, it's high. Yep. Okay. Are there any specific questions or clarifications?
I have a question.
Yes, John, go ahead.
When will we be discussing the T B D on the recreation result revolving fund warrant? Is that tonight or is that in the future? Or what is the current thinking about that?
Yeah, I think we were trying to get together with Stephen and Dan first. Have that conversation and then have that presented to the board for draft eight. But if the board wants to do something different.
And we probably have to stage one, have ready for.
We're going to workshop.
And we could, did you hear that, John, talk about at the workshop?
Yeah, okay. I just wondered to see what the scope is. I think what I remember from the past, you know, it was really kind of dedicated to turf field funding. And now we're examining whether to expand the scope of that to encompass more of the recreation facilities like fencing and scoreboards and, you know, some of the items that are on the superintendent's cut list so that we can, we can maintain those part, those aspects of our facilities, you know, steady and true on a long term planning process. As well as what Stephen O'Keefe and Dan value are are working on, which I think is a little bit different than that. So maybe there's three aspects of this to consider. Turf field, other athletic facilities, and the work that Stephen and Dan are are doing.
We did have a discussion with the subcommittee about the athletic, athletic subcommittee that we're hit.
Yeah.
Athletic subcommittee. So, John, you are right. It's about expanding the the revolving fund per its original direction, which defined it as recreation, including, it didn't say limited to the term for long range, high expense, usually headwinds on budgets, like the bleachers could be the light poles, could be scoreboards, could be fencing. So it's, it's allocating space in that doesn't change the turf funding plan, but adding to include more of the recreation piece. And the other piece that I'd look forward to talking with with Dan and Stephen about is directing athletic fees perhaps to this account and funded through athletic fees, a direct purpose for a direct, a directory for a direct purpose, all just discussion. But we did have a brief discussion at the athletic subcommittee and look forward to talking with Dan and Stephen about this as well.
Does that clarify for you, John? You're good?
Yes, yes, I'm, I'm good. If we have continuing conversation on that point is good by me.
Great, thank you. I have nothing further on the budgets. I was going to ask Mark if he wants to come forward and talk about finance committee.
Here this leader is the busy tonight, so I do the short straw. You can do this with you guys today. So first of all, thank you for the opportunity. And regarding the workshop, I would definitely, I've been doing this just a couple of years, so I know I have benefited from learning more about the budget. So I'd love to be a part of that included in that if possible. But just a brief update with the, the budget or with our, the finance committee and how we, we look to discuss the budget. We discussed it yesterday, but a week ago yesterday. We all presented our different forces, the budget. We talked about how health and dental is going to be the major increase for each of the components here, each of the budgets. We've got a couple of new people on the group, like I said, like myself, would benefit from more discussion on that budget. Other things ever talked about, so curriculum. He has some general questions on the budget. There was a almost two point or two percent increase for that. Again, mostly due to health insurance. When it came to technology, I guess that decreased by almost six percent. Student services increased about four point four percent for the year. And then Gina talked about how there was some it's district paper, special education staff. Food service, another increase, but there was also the potential for replacing in a large expensive dishwasher. For myself, I worked with the administration folks where there was a seven point three percent increase again, due to benefits and insurance. And that meeting, we discussed a type of administration. There's some new people in their position within the last couple of years. There was a robust discussion around the domain leaders and their time involved with actual teaching and the amounts of students that they taught. Other than that, I think that's pretty much it. We're all making headway on our portion of budget, looking forward to diving into second draft and eventually third drafts. But yeah, any questions?
Anybody questions about finance committee?
Doesn't look like it. But yeah, thank you. Thank you for everyone's work. I mean, I know the, the few, the subcommittees that I was on, there were some good questions being asked and good conversations.
Yeah, no, I find it, I've been trying to personally do a different section every single year to learn more about each section. So I really appreciate others and the questions that they bring to the table because you know, I was in education for a while, but at the same time, I like hearing other people's perspectives. We're outside of education, really kind of pushing the envelope just to make sure dollars or dollars are spent on the students instead of on other things that aren't necessarily education focused.
Yes.
Definitely appreciate that discussion.
Great. And we'll be in touch with Jeannie about using your next finance committee meeting.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you. Really appreciate working with finance committee. Committee updates. Can I kind of go through policy? Any policy updates? Dan, you're in the room or John?
Yeah, there's, there's some policy updates. We've had two meetings since our last meeting. I'll just say there's a number of policies that are going to be prepared to be presented at the next S A U meeting. Won't go through all of them. I presume they'll show up in the agenda packet. But I did want to touch base and report back to Stephen O'Keefe's question about instructional materials, requests for reconsideration versus library resources reconsideration. And we had a discussion about that. And so we have two policies. One of them is I G as in George, E as in elephant. And we have K E as in elephant, C as in cat. The I G E is for instructional materials. And the, oh, I'm sorry, I said K E C. I think it's I J L. My bad. It's alphabet soup. That's the library resources. The belief of administration is, is that instructional materials requests for reconsideration fall under the I G E policy. And the library resources and any other learning materials that are in the school, like for example, a maybe a, a teacher has a small library in their classroom or some sort of online resource that's being used. That's not part of the formal instructional materials would fall under the library resources reconsideration policy. Did I, did I restate that right, Steve and Mike?
Yes, that was accurate, Mr. Glover, sir.
So I'm not sure if that, go ahead, Dan.
That materials, all of the instructional materials go through the library to be distributed there. Ordered by the library, they're managed by the library, distributed by the library. Library materials.
So. And I'll just add, if I may, the, the instructional materials policy, what it, what it does is it, it enables a parent or a family to have an alternative curriculum or to, to learn the material that is not the resource that's being deployed. Whereas the library resources reconsideration is a, is a mechanism by which a person can follow a process to have a, a, a resource actually removed from the school. So there's a different outcome depending on which policy is, is applicable for any particular request.
So if the item is part of the prescribed curriculum for the class, like say you're taking English and you're reading Tom Sawyer, that, well, that's tricky because he's probably in the library too. But if a parent. So that would stay under our purview, but also a parent could request a different equal book.
You're talking about.
And then, yeah, because no one's an objective Tom Sawyer right now. But I was trying to keep it easy. So that would fall under our curriculum. It's under the purview of this board, but the library is ordering it?
No.
Okay. Sorry.
So when we order instructional materials, it goes into the library and is distributed out for the class out of the lot.
Fifty copies of Tom Sawyer come out of the library, but they're not library materials. They're instructional materials. But then the, the thing that caught my attention, because I have not thought about what you do with this, is those things that are not in the library, they're not in the curriculum, but they're on a shelf in the classroom. The idea of this policy then would be to make those de facto library materials seems reasonable.
Yeah, I think so. That's what we thought.
Yeah.
That was a discussion. Anything connected to curriculum is I J O, whatever it was, sorry. Anything not connected to curriculum is in the building through the library.
Never thought of that.
And we didn't, we was just start over with the discussion.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right.
Could I just ask, could I just ask Stephen O'Keefe, does that address the question that you had raised on this topic?
It does. And the reason why we, or I raised it to you and I asked for the policy committee to do this because our previous policy afforded a parent a right for both, the instructional material as well as the library material, to leverage that policy for mediation or, you know, taking care of their, their issue. The new policy, when we updated, it removed one of those components. And there was no dialogue anywhere in any of our records to acknowledge that. And we offer an alternative path. But what you just articulated and then hopefully it'll be in the minutes to the policy committee, we can now point back and say, yes, we did not remove a parent's ability to, 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 to challenge a particular issue, it's just located in a different format and a different mechanism and has a different source of relief. And I think that's important to, to share.
And so clarifying follow up. So then if there is a issue with classroom material, then that's something that the board could decide, oh, we really want a different material. But if a parent wanted to do something different, then they have their own recourse separate from. That seems easier too. I don't necessarily think we need to hear from every parent who doesn't.
I can speak to that.
To hear from parents.
I could speak to that. The, the board involvement in this, it would be a, maybe at an appeal level. This would normally be handled in the first instance at the local level, at the building level and escalate from there if warranted. But I think the bottom line on this is between the two policies, if a family was concerned about the education their student was receiving, no matter what the resource, there is a mechanism for that parent to request and some alternative to that resource, either removal of a, of a library book or, or an alternative curriculum for their student. So whatever may be bugging somebody, there is a path to request. You know, the school system look, review the material and, and help them achieve some side of satisfaction.
If I may, without being irritating, I do love this topic. Very interesting. If so, so the teacher's library bookshelf would never be required, it would be supplemental. And if it's required, then it would become.
And they do go kind of in and out based on the year.
Yeah. Perfect.
Any other policy? All right. P P C has not met recently. Is there anything with wellness?
Now, the secondary meeting is in November. December. November, November.
All right. So what's coming up? Constitution Interpretation Committee, I just met with them Monday so they could get organized and start reviewing the constitution based on what we had said in a prior meeting and they're all excited and going to town and looking at the review and so I think it was Brad set up a format, a sheet for them to start tracking the things that they're reviewing and just looking at. They're going to bring any, you know, anything to us. John, do you, I don't know if you want to elaborate since really it's your committee. I was just there to introduce it.
No, just to say that we'll be meeting on November 12th after school for at least an hour, maybe a little longer, depending on how it goes and how everyone's schedule is working out to kick this off. And I think we're going to start with the committee itself, the provisions in the constitution that form the committee so that we all understand the meets and downs of our role on the committee.
Thank you. Any other committee before we go to recreational review? So Pete, you want to bring up that discussion?
Yeah, so Dan and I have been doing a lot of work with our administration to address this board concerns with regards to our current contract with the Amherst right now. So we met multiple times over the past two, two and a half months and including at least two meetings with the town administrator in the town of Amherst. And after our last meeting, we proposed several changes to the actual contract which were relayed to all board members in advance of tonight's conversation. With the first one under section one, adding a batting cage, the baseball development center, which we want to properly name, by the way. But the list of outdoor facilities as section F, baseball development center. Under section four, I'll come back to that in just a moment. But under section 10, add between first and second sentence, the town will frequently review the current state of district property facilities with the S U facilities and athletic departments. And that is to search and seek out opportunities where things need to be replaced, repaired, refreshed due to wear and tear issues. There was nothing in the contract that, that stated that that stuff would happen with a degree of frequency. And we wanted to make sure that that stuff is ready. Under section four, we had requested that we add in under the rental section that effective July 1st, 2025, all programming that charges participants a fee and utilizes any subging cooperative school district facility shall charge residents of Amherst and Malvern in the same rate. This policy ensures equitable access to programming and facilities for all local residents. And we selected the July 1st, 2025 date. And we selected the July 1st, 2025 date with purpose to make sure that there was ample enough time for all parties to address that inside their budgets for, for the fiscal year and any changes that need to be made to software for registration, so forth and so on. So after that meeting, we submitted this request to the town administrator. And then the town administrator presented it to the Amherst Board of Selectmen now almost three weeks ago. And our business administrator received word from the town administrator, their official response. And their official response was the board of selectmen has, or have had no problem with changes under section one and section 10. However, they are not willing to change the fee structure as suggested under section four. As we discussed, they feel that having the town of Amherst subsidize the overhead for Mobern's participants is not appropriate. They're hoping that you're willing to take it back to the full board and explain the situation, hopefully leave things the way they are. Let me know your thoughts. So we had met this morning to talk about that and see what path we wanted to pursue as a part of the negotiation. And bringing it to the full board tonight is to seek guidance from the six of us in terms of what direction that we wanted to go on as, as a formal board. I can share my own perspective, my own perspective as serving and representing the town of Mobern that there are several policies that address equitable access and more importantly, partnership with all programming that's done at the school, specifically in their policy K I J A O, which is the school, family and community partnership agreement. The last paragraph states the support of area businesses, agencies and community organizations that we sought through financial goods and services and volunteer contributions. Partnerships will be encouraged with local organizations, local city and county governments, and talented individuals to strengthen school programs, family practices and student learning. Student participation and community service will be encouraged. Business partnerships will also be encouraged to assist students for the successful transition into employment and further education. We also have another policy with regards to the use of school buildings and facilities that specifically has priority and more importantly, that talks a bit about fees and fees being charged. And I'll get to fee piece in just a moment. But more importantly, the policy does basically encourage us to, to partner and work together. The first priority going to all school facilities, granted access for school and school-related activities for organizations with direct school affiliations. And the second priority to use would be granted to the town recreation department. It only doesn't state which town, but I'm assuming both. But the third priority being granted to organizations, direct town affiliation, fourth priority being granted to those activities for musicians that serve the youth of the community, and all other proper requests shall be granted on the basis of availability. And then, of course, it goes, no person, group or organization has any vested right to use the school facilities. The school board reserves the right to make the final decision on the use of any school facility. Approval may be denied due to lack of appropriate space or previously activity, but now can result in violation of any aspect of school board policy or guidelines or the facilities we use for an unlawful purpose. Then we go on to our school use facility PDF, which is the application that folks will fill out to leverage or use a, a school facility. We talk a little bit about where the fees are actually generated. And the last paragraph on page number two of that document says events directed or sponsored by the Amherst, Sephegan or Mobern School Districts or nonprofit organizations whose mission is to directly support and benefit the Amherst, Sephegan, Mobern schools and their students shall not incur any rental use fees. Personnel and door utility fees shall be assessed or described therein. So I share all that for the public's consumption who may be watching this on playback or somebody on Zoom right now, to talk a little bit about equitable access specifically to the facilities that are owned by both communities. And right now, residents of the town of Mobern are concerned about that equitable access, and they're looking for us to, to, to assist them on that. If a Mobern resident wants to access programming that leverages our facilities at no cost to the town of Amherst, Mobern residents are being asked to pay for non-resident fees. And so Mr. Venu and I actually had an opportunity to dive deeper into that number. Are you comfortable talking about that, or do you want me to just get to you? Okay. So one specific program was our basketball program. And the basketball program currently involves both Mobern and Amherst residents. And the basketball program also leverages the high school gymnasium during the winter time for games. And we were able to receive a breakdown in terms of the overall financials for this particular portion of the rec department in terms of revenue and expenses. So revenue, total revenue, including approximately seventeen Mobern or quote unquote, non-resident individuals is approximately thirty-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars and ten cents. Expenses for that program over the course of that timeframe were thirty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty-five cents. With a net loss, the town of Amherst of eight dollars and seventy-five cents. There was a concern that was brought to Dan and I's attention about charging the town of Amherst for use of our high school facilities. And the current pricing would go from roughly a hundred and five dollars or a hundred and twenty-five for a Mobern resident to a hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents or a hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents for a Mobern resident to participate in that particular program. And the fee that they are quoting would be fees for high school staff on Saturdays for the length of the program of approximately five thousand, five hundred dollars. And for the total of, you know, eighty-eight, third to fourth graders who leverage the facility of sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. I can share this document with people if they'd like to see it. The core or the crux of, of the issue isn't necessarily the actual cost, because I think when we take a look at the administrative costs that they're leveraging in this particular document, they actually do administrative overhead of fifteen dollars per player of four thousand, hundred and sixty-five dollars. That administrative cost goes to cover the actual true costs of running and operating the rec department to support the action program, which Mobern residents do contribute to as a result of their baseline sort of participation fee. When we take a look at the equitable nature for both communities in terms of the support for this building, Ms. Facy, our business administrator, was able to dive deep specifically into one section of this programming and specifically the basketball program, because we wanted to not rely on the entire year, but one particular program. And there is a cost that's actually borne by the community of Mobern to support the basketball program. Ms. Facy, are you comfortable talking about that?
Yeah, sure. So, so we took a look at the scheduled time or the estimated scheduled time for studio staff at the basketball program and came up with an estimate of what it would cost the districts, or what it does cost the district to pay for that additional studio time during those programs. And, and then applying a fifteen percent average amount that Mobern would cover for that. You know, it wasn't a huge amount of money, but it certainly is somewhat of a factor. There's also work that we didn't do.
With purpose.
Right, to, which would take, which would be a large endeavor to actually try to determine all of the costs that are underwritten by the town of Mobern with their fifteen percent participation in the budget for facilities.
And the piece that we didn't dive down into would be, you know, prorating electrical use, prorating wear and tear on flooring and refurbishing and doing all those types of things. The replacement of toilet paper because of bathroom use, water usage, like you could go down this rabbit hole of things that we would need to quantify in order to present to the community of Amherst to say, or specifically the Amherst Board of Selectmen to say, this is the absolute cost that we need to do cost sharing to that. And Dan and I's goal was to keep this simple and to really try to drive home a partnership between both of our communities. Say, listen, this is truly an equitable issue. It's making sure that communities of both towns have access to programming that's operated out of this, this building, and something that's actually funded by both communities. And so when Ms. Facy and I actually had a couple of conversations about some of those costs, it doesn't end with the basketball program. It continued with several other programs as well. If a Mobern resident wanted to sign up for the rock climbing wall program, Mobern would be charged an extra fifteen dollars. And the instructor of that rock climbing wall is a member of our faculty. And somebody to use the ropes for it, they would pay an extra family fee, I think it was fifteen or twenty dollars on top of what the Amherst residents would do. And it's also provided by a faculty member of this, this institution as well. And so it's truly an issue for residents of Mobern and for equal access to places that we own. And I disagree respectfully with the Amherst Board of Selectmen saying that there's an underwriting among our participants when in fact, if we take a look at the history of this, this place, there's been an underwriting of the rec programs that utilize the facilities of the rec department. And so as a board, I mentioned this in public session because I wanted to make sure the message got out there. This isn't an animosity thing. This isn't a, we're trying to go after, you know, every single dollar that we could get, because this is all about serving our communities. These are outstanding facilities here, and we all should be enjoying, period. Lot of hard work, determination, taxpayer money has gone in the support infrastructure that we provide to our students on a daily basis. And when we take a look at one of our communities offering programming and then charging the other community a surcharge to access the programming inside that facility, it just comes off to me, and to be honest with you, my fellow Mobern residents, being unfair. And I share this story where a parent tried to register for a family program here, and he circulated the answer of, hey, why, why is Mobern being charged that? And the response actually in the Facebook community was because it's Amherst High School, not Mobern's. And that is at the core, I think, of the structure of while Vernon trying to constantly feel as an active participant and joint partner in this place. And this unfortunately just brings along the, the old sort of language of, yes, this is not a Mobern institution. This is an Amherst institution that we pay into. And so as a board, what I'm looking for is not only support, but more importantly, direction in terms of how we would respond back to the Amherst Board of Selectmen, because I do believe that they're trying to come at this from a good place. I trust that they are looking out of the best interest of the Amherst taxpayer. I just respectfully disagree with the subsidization of Mobern residents participating in programming. Yeah, just before we go to that, is okay, Dan, do you want to?
Just the way the town structures the fees, when they charge for the basketball program, only including direct costs in those fees. So when they, they call what Stephen Redd is just cost of t-shirts, cost of, you know, stipends, or, you know, wear and tear on materials that they provide. They don't include any of the overhead costs. So the rec director's salary, the assistant's salary, it costs of equipment doesn't get included in, in what?
So that's just part of Amherst's town costs?
So the town is subsidizing the cost of the rec department in that way. And that's why they're justified. That's how they justify the extra out of town fees to Mobern. And what we pointed out is that when they, they don't charge, none of the schools, none of the Amherst or Mobern schools is charged for use of the indoor. So, so the rec department gets their, the use of them for free. And what Stephen and I kind of suggested is that we could go through the, all the math, and as Amy pointed out, it would be kind of a heavy lift on both sides. They would have to determine how many student, how many participants from Mobern, how many participants from Amherst, and then determine what the overhead cost per participant is, and then we would have to add up the, the lights of the, you know, wear and tear and also. So it'd be a heavy lift. So what kind of suggested is, you know, because the two towns are so closely entangled that we're, we really are almost one community in a, in a great sense, that it would kind of be to, you know, the benefit of both communities if we kind of just said, you know, when you use Sephegan facilities, rather than going through the process of, okay, you have an overhead cost here, we'll cross it out here, and then in the end, we come up with a dollar value. Just, just make it even and say kind of optics for Mobern to help show that they are a part of the community, that maybe it would be good for them to help us, not capital to this whole process. So but, you know, they don't seem to have the same mindset we.
Can I just ask a question, a clarification for me? Sorry. The, the difference between, and this is because I've paid rent fees, but always in town, right? The difference between a resident and non-resident, is it just a fifteen dollar difference? That's it. Okay.
So that actually helped, that actually answered part of my question, because I was trying to figure out how exactly, like what exactly they saw as subsidized. And it's the, where the town is paying for the infrastructure, basically, to put these programs in place. The people who, the website, the athletic director, the program that accepts the payments, that sort of thing, and we're recouping that from non-residents by charging a little bit more, not, they would say not for the use of the facilities, but to help cover your share of this kind of bigger picture expense that we have that we're maintaining. Am I understanding?
That's correct.
The right, that right? Okay.
Although on, on the sheet that we gave and I've received, there is an administrative overhead of fifteen dollars per player that was included in the data, which is forty-nine hundred dollars, which was separate from uniforms, referees, program staff, I mean, its employees. Though it's a line item, that's my assumption is goes to pay for some, for some of that cost that, in the base fee, in, in, in the base fee of the actual programs.
And I'm assuming that on the programs that were here, where there's a teacher, one of our staff members who's teaching, that they're getting paid some stipend by the rec department for offering that program?
It's not paid by the, they're not paid by the school.
That I know, I know.
They wouldn't be paid by the local program.
I know, we don't pay the, the, the town, but my assumption is that the program is offered volunteer or by volunteers. The scenario that we raised was using the basketball program up at the Mobern village school, and they don't pay the town of Mobern for that use, but Mobern residents pay the fifteen dollar surcharge to leverage the programming. It's volunteer. We can get back to you on that particular piece, but my assumption is that it's volunteer.
Because I would, I would, I agree with you. I don't like the idea of saying if someone's going to come to a program that's basically getting hosted out of the school. That Mobern, who is paying their proportionate share of every bill associated with this school, has to pay extra. So my, my first inclination is to agree with you on that. But more than my first inclination, I agree with you on that. Full stop. I do see, and I don't know what the solution is, but I'll toss out that I do see a little bit the rec department's, you know, we're operating this program that's funded by taxpayers. It was probably not, well, I know for the budget, is not breaking even, you know, like it's, it's getting funded to have the, these roles, these positions. And if we have, you know, I mean, I guess I understand their position. I understand. I can see where they're coming from. It doesn't, you know, the flip side is it's not probably taking, it's, it's a incremental additional effort to add the, you know, administrative cost of, you know what I mean? Like, it's not like we have to do a new website because one of the programs is being here. We have an athletic director who we're going to be paying, not athletic director, a, what is his role? Anyway, it's the rec director, who, who we're going to be paying regardless of how many people from Mobern and sign up for this program or not. So it, it does seem like there's not, you know, there's not an extra cost to the town of, of doing it. So I don't necessarily have a solution. Is there like a, I don't know if they consider something like a, not specific to programs here, but like, look, if non-residents are going to sign up for a rec department's forever, you pay an extra five dollar non-resident charge to, I don't know, enroll or sign up, you know, regardless of what you're doing. I don't know. I mean, I'm just thinking out loud if they want some kind of bigger picture thing to help cover some of their overhead. So.
Christine, is the fee discrepancy or fees of, of any kind addressed in previous lease agreements for the facility?
Not that we're aware. Definitely wasn't in this.
Cindy, that's where I'm pausing. My sentiment is with Anna, if, if we understood the cost to be exactly the same, although I don't know what the difference are between ha- having personnel and websites and all of those pieces that are probably subsidized by the taxes of the founders of Amherst. And that's why we have the non-resident fees. But I'm wondering if this board is the right board to figure this out, or if it isn't a conversation between the Mobern Board of Selectmen and the rec department, or the two boards of selectmen. I understand we have this power that we can exert to do this. But, but, but are we stepping outside of what this rental agreement is intending to do? It also gets confusing because what if you have programs that sometimes meet in the buildings, sometimes don't meet, like which programs are we talking about? I just wonder if this is outside of our lane. I just wonder if this is outside of our lane.
But what if, what if? I see your, I see your point. But what if the rec department said, no, this is how we have it. And we're going to, basically, we're going to, we're going to be using the high school, which the high school, including the president, is going to be paying for. You know, um, all of us, but we're going to make it. You know, we're going to forbid any Mount Vernon people from from signing up. Unless it's something doing, but if they did that, we'd probably be like, wait a minute, you know? I mean, I know that would, that would be really upsetting to me. And then, or they say, okay, Mount Vernon, you want to, you want to send your kid to our basketball programming for a hundred dollars? We'd be like, no, that's, that's, you know, now you're, you're taking part of our South Heagan community and telling them they can't participate. Here, because I'm assuming we'll look at other nonprofits.
But you're assuming like they're only banning Mount Vernon people at all. I I don't. I think we got to get, so that fifteen dollars, going back to that fifteen dollars, because that's the difference, right?
It changes by program based on the cost of the program. So the cost program, it could be ten dollars, or five dollars, or twenty or twenty.
Because there's an overhead, I'm thinking of those costs, they're saying, are they, is the rec department, the town, when you were in discussion, that fifteen dollars is really the. Cost of our rec department managing this program? Or is it? That it's not going to the.
The position is that fifteen dollars is charged to Mount Vernon residents because of the overhead. Costs associated with operating the infrastructure to run the program. Not to run the program because that is subsidized by the fees that are charged to them.
It would be the same amount for every single program, if that's what it's doing. Because if we're talking about the overhead, it's not like a cheap program is, has less.
Be more involved, be more involved though by like number of meetings or what has to happen on the back end by a rec director. Like, so. I sent my kids to the day camp that used to run at the Amherst Middle School, way more intensive administrative time than a basketball team. What would stop the town of Mount Vernon from also having a basketball team that needs it South Heagan?
That's a great question. I'm glad you asked. Very prepared to answer. The way, the way I equate to that, Chris, is the optics of it all. Let's say the town of Mount Vernon decided to host an event. And we got a national act to come in and we sponsored it down here in the Amherst region, right? And we said, all Mount Vernon residents can come and you're going to be free. But we're going to tell Amherst residents, you have to pay fifty bucks to get it, because we have to cover the costs that it took for us to do it. There'd be a lot of people in this room upset that our high schools are being used and the situation was reversed. They just wouldn't be. And to say that's a hypothetical is not a far stretch. So it really truly is about equitable access to the facilities that Mount Vernon owns. And we do own a portion of this building. And when it comes down to if it's five dollars, ten dollars, fifteen, twenty or thirty. There's a barrier. The barrier is you're not worthy enough to use the facilities that you own. Because someone else is coming in and offering a program that are subsidized by maybe a different tax rate or taxes. Who are paying the base fee identical to both communities.
I see your point, except. And if it were a school league or something, right, and and Amherst's paid different than Mount Vernon, that would be, I'm just, no, 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 we know. For all intents and purposes, the rec department is a private group, even though it's owned by the town of the Amherst, private group. Who rents the facility, albeit we rented to them for nothing. So I mean, this ugly conversation could get real crazy.
See, it goes, it goes down a rabbit hole.
So it makes it a.
And I'm glad you mentioned it because it makes it, we go down a rabbit hole in that case, because then Mount Vernon is directly supporting. The rec program by offering the facilities and maintaining those facilities to make sure the facilities are up to speed and up to up to provide. Electric, gas, heat, hot water, um propane, all the things that we use uh to support this program.
But it is in some ways subsidized, they give us kids attending, but on the department things, yeah. But those costs, but we're not charging the rec department, so he can, we're not charging the rec department. For renting this facility. So therefore, both towns are already sharing the cost no matter what.
Yeah.
But that fifteen dollar fee has nothing to do with renting this facility. It has to do with the overhead of Amherst Rec. Department. If we, if we were charging a fee to the Rammer Rec Department, say, absolutely, I get it, I'm on board. But right now, I'm saying this piece of being bored by the town of Amherst. Mount Vernon is not contributing to that fifteen dollar fee. In any way. So that's the difference. And that's where I'm like, at this point, I'm kind of like, does this discussion belong at the Board of Selectmen having them? Negotiate a fee, I don't.
Yeah, so.
Are we at the?
Yeah, I respectfully disagree. I think this belongs, the conversation belongs here because it's our building. It's our policy, it's our agreement that we actually entered in with the rec department to use our facilities. I think when we go down that rabbit hole of, you know, what are the actual true costs? And if we wanted to, I mean, we could. Request our business office to go in and itemize everything. We could also request our business office to start charging the Amherst Rec Department a fee uh as a renter. And then we reclaim the dollars associated with the fifteen percent subsidy back to the town of Mount Vernon in the form of revenue. And then Amherst residents, it goes back to support the tax-based and direct. No one wants to do that. I don't want it. Dan doesn't.
I don't think that's intersecting with why there's a change of difference in the rate, though. It's not because of the anything to do with the school. It's because for the town of Amherst, we are paying the extra bit for our kids. So with Mount Vernon, why did they pay fifteen dollars to the Amherst Rec Department for every kid who wants to play a game? Then you have that. Because Amherst taxpayers are paying some portion of owning a website and owning athletic directors and things that Mount Vernon would not be paying. So then, so then Amherst would be bearing that portion for Mount Vernon students.
So the custodian that we.
Not the custodian, none of those.
No, no, I'm just saying, the custodian that this district pays for to support athletic programs through the rec department. On a Saturday in the gymnasium, the toilet paper that we buy, the power that we use to support, is actually paid for by the town of Mount Vernon.
And your kids playing basketball don't pay any more than ours for them.
So.
So, but we're both, they're both.
The point is, is in order for us to access the programming, we're being charged an assist, an extra charge.
Right, because our students, because our students are being subsidized, or our children are being subsidized by the rec department through Amherst taxpayers. So there is another charge, right? So there is, there's a cost associated to having the website. If you pay online, there's a cost associated to that. To have, to having that service as a fee to take out of that. Our Amherst kids aren't paying that themselves. We're subsidizing their program. So that's separate from school, anything to do with school. So every kid, there's fifteen kids on the team. Kind of them from Amherst, five from Mount Vernon, all paying the same portion of school facility, same portion of uniform, same portion of whatever, but not same portion of administrative, because that little piece. Amherst is paying for theirs. Just like if we came up the hill and we wanted to join one of your programs. There would be an additional cost, I assume, because we don't have a website up there, and we don't have an athletic director up there, and we don't have those pieces. To me, that's where the difference comes. Like, we're. As long as there's not a, you can't play, but even still, it would. That's why I think this is a bigger, it's a, it's a different conversation than just here, other than we have the power to say, you can't have the facilities.
So, I, I mean, I think the difference between coming up the hill is that we'd be coming up the hill to Mount Vernon. And a little like if you all came down the hill to the Amherst school, those are facilities. They're separate entities. You don't own them. You, uh, you, Mount Vernon.
This is ours.
Own part of this. This is personal, yeah. Right. So, so the way we see it, interestingly, is that. Mount Vernon. I mean, you could say that, Mon, because we don't charge anything. If we were charging. No problem.
Different conversation.
Ex- you're just a regular private entity who's coming in and using this building. You know, fine, you know, you, you want to charge extra for people who are outside the town, whatever. Um, maybe you even get a. Kickback or something from the town, and I mean, not in a bad way, but the town is helping subsidize you, but you're a private entity and we're charging you. You know, we're charging, no problem with the extra charge, come on, Vernon. But, um, but Mount Vernon. Is basically giving its share of this building to the Amherst Rec Department every single time the Amherst Rec Department shows up and uses them. Or free. And. And there are expenses associated with that that are coming directly out of our budget that Mount Vernon is paying for in real tax dollars every year. Part of the salaries, part of the expenses. But you're getting told there's an extra charge. If you, if if your kids want to participate in the program, then we're giving it for to free. So it seems to me that it either ought to be. Yeah, I, I mean, I I fully support the language you've proposed here to them. Um. And I think the alternative is, I mean, I think right now that the response to them should be something along the lines of, yeah, but in many ways, Mount Vernon is subsidizing your program as well. So there's got to be some sort of middle ground here. Um, and maybe there's something like, and I don't know how you feel about this, but maybe there's something like a nominal five dollar non-resident fee. Flat, not, not more for others, like to help cover a small part of the overhead that's fundamental to the program or something. I don't know.
Rec department costs, the town is currently bearing. That Vernon does not, that's not.
Free place to do this stuff.
But when, but there's a, there's a director, the executive assistant, there's a bill, I mean, there's, there's things that. Are under our tax dollars and Amherst residents. That should be covered a little bit from out of town people. So I agree with you. Maybe there's some middle ground. That instead of the full fifteen, maybe it's half, or maybe it's always like a fat five dollar flat fee if it's a Mount Vernon. That I could, I could get on for it.
And I think it should be specifically, if that happens, it should be. Clear that it's, I mean, it shows, like, they need, they should do something on their website, like. You know, admin fee for non-residents or something, like as opposed to a participating in the program. I don't know. I mean, it's semantics, if it's five dollars, it's five dollars, but I mean, it, it.
So the, the, my, my, my concern, and it is in no way talking, thinking about equity or anything, is that. This body, if we made this decision. Is. Pushing some additional costs somewhere because the programs are losing. So either the Amherst taxpayers are now paying more for the program if we have non-resident students, or the students of Amherst. Whatever, the kids of Amherst are going to have to pay more to pay the difference. And I don't think we have that power to make another. Another, and I think that's why it was rightly at the Board of Selectmen, because we don't have the, we don't have the authority to say. The town has to spend more money, like that's not our board.
We have the authority to say you can't rent our space for free.
We don't in our poli- in the policies of it, though, because we, like I said, because we would. And I get the optics, whatever, if we would let Mount Vernon also have a basketball team, we, we have to change the whole policy and say we no longer give for free to anybody. We have to rent it for money. And we do have that power.
So.
I don't, yeah, I don't.
We, we, we respectfully, we, we do have the power to say that. If we're going to be charging a fee, the program needs to be offered to residents of all communities at the identical cost.
If there was a share in the overhead cost of the program.
But there's a share of the overhead cost of this, in this, the infrastructure that provides the program.
For, but just every group that wants to use it in that category.
If a resident of Milford tries to access the program, if a resident of Merrimack tries to access the program, and they're working the halls. They pay the identical fee as somebody from other.
So.
But if we don't pay, but Sohegan is not charging the recs department cost.
Yes, but we're, we're covering the costs.
We are, but Merrimack, Merrimack residents don't pay into Sohegan High School. Mount Vernon does. But if we're not. If Sohegan's not charging the rec department. Then really that fifteen dollar fee. Is because Mount Vernon doesn't pay tax dollars in Amherst to cover the rec department.
But how do we recover the cost of operating the facilities in that program?
But Amherst is our, Amherst town is also paying into this.
Right, yeah, eighty-five percent.
Right.
And if people from, if people from Merrimack or Milford are doing it. I mean, then we're really subsidizing, right?
No, no, no.
Subsidizing, because we're not charging anything, then the rec department should give us extra money.
You know, but there's a, there is an overhead cost to the town of Amherst. For the, for the participant, Jordy, that Mount Vernon doesn't pay. So the question is, should Mount Vernon pay even less?
And I think, I think that may be the answer, that they should pay less. It should be, you know, I mean, maybe, again, some like five dollar fee. I don't know how you feel about that for the amount of rates.
Is there any?
At very least, it shouldn't be the same as what, I mean, since they're already paying for the facilities that are being used.
Then we're going to have to go through this process for every group that uses this school that fits into that, into that parameter. For anything that happens, like if either town uses the school for something in that residence. Window, and we're going to have to figure this out, parse this out for everything we do that. We're going to have to ask for every rental agreement to come before this body, so we can tell them what they can charge.
So I agree.
So I just, I have, I have more questions. Um, is there a recommendation from the rec department? Is there anything, did anyone talk to them, what this would do to their budget?
So, Andy, you want to address that? Because I know you.
Yeah, there, there's no internal accounting. Any of this. They don't know actually what the cost per, what the overhead cost per participant is or anything like that. So. Getting, you know, this is kind of, we want to go through the process, doing all the math, taking all the time and pulling all the invoices, and doing that, all the cup, all that stuff.
Well, they're the ones who are going to be losing the money. And if their budget is already at a loss, where are they going to make it up? I would want to know that before I agree to pass anything on to anybody else.
Well, I think what, there are two parts. One is the kind of cross elimination, you know? We have a cost here, they have a cost here. My, you know, this is Mount Vernon's share, this is, you know, then we cross it out and we see what's left at the bottom and, you know. I think in the end, it would be probably. There would be a significant amount of money that is left over on the Amherst, that that their subsidies. So there's two parts to this. There's that part. Where Mount Vernon does share some of the costs when Amherst kids come in, use, use the facility. And there's also the, the kind of community part of it, which is kind of maybe the part that should be at the town level with the negotiating. And saying, you know, we're, we're close enough together as a community that. There's a courtesy, could you drop the extra five dollars and make it up somewhere else? Or, you know, the, that kind of thing. So there's kind of. Two pieces to it. I mean, I think obviously, one, Amherst is probably bearing. Much more of the cost. Want for this. When, we don't know if it's equitable, because nobody's done the math. It's no internal accounting. So.
So this is extra fifteen dollars.
Instead of having to go through this process and doing all the math. We just kind of have some kind of a problem.
Yeah, I would like to hear from the rec department on what, like, and then they'll have to go crunch their numbers. What does this do to the program? And what does it do? To either the students who play or the, um. The town budget that we don't have a review over. But I also respectfully think this is something that is, it's something to work out and not something to do through the rental agreement. I think we're out of our lane.
I'd like to chime in when I, when I get a moment.
Go ahead, John.
Uh, start off with a question. Does the Mount Vernon, uh, town of Mount Vernon have a rec department? Stephen?
Yes.
Okay. But the simple solution to me would be to get rec department to rec department to have a memorandum of understanding. That Amherst and Mount Vernon rep, uh, residents will be treated as residents in respective towns to participate in the respective rec department activities. That would be a unique agreement. And the reason why that is important is because Amherst and Mount Vernon have a, what I hope is an, is a, is a, is an enduring bond. Which is South Heagan campus. And any threat to that bond, it worries me. This is why I'm concerned about moves that Amherst School Board is making to pull fifth grade. Out of AMS and compelling Mount Vernon to uh consider uh leaving. The Amherst community um as a result. That's a conversation for a different day. I'm an Amherst representative, but I, I, part of my duty is to make sure that the uh Mount Vernon students that, that uh. Enter our campus are well-served, as well-served as anybody, as any Amherst resident or any Amherst student. So I am looking for ways to deepen the bonds um that were forged uh decades ago between the two communities. And so, you know, a simple solution could be a memo, memorandum of understanding between rec departments. It would eliminate the problem. I think it also that our rec department is a community service. I imagine Mount Vernon's is the same. The rec department is funded by Amherst taxpayers, the, all the overhead costs, regardless of who participates. That's baked in. The participation fees help, uh, the attempt to help. Uh, neutralize the cost of actually running specific programs. And we see programs come in, we see programs go out. They make decisions based on participation, whether they keep one, whether they don't keep one or not. This is why we keep saying, some, some are saying that this is operating at a loss. Well, actually, the, the delta is what, eight dollars? Or fifty dollars? I mean, they're trying to operate on a neutral. Or fifty dollars? I mean, they're trying to operate on a neutral position because it's a community service. They're not trying to make money off of user fees. So if Mont Vernon residents are paying the same as Amherst residents, and that changes the calculation, and both communities need to pay fi, Amherst needs to pay five dollars more, and, and Mont Vernon needs to pay ten dollars less, then that's the solution for the rec department to operate a program for the community to break even. That's their challenge. Um, but, but sitting here and using our facilities, I mean, the rec department wants to use Amher, uh, Clark Wilkins and AMS and Sohegan and the tennis courts and all sorts of facilities in and around Amherst. Who knows where the basketball game's gonna be played? They need flexibility. Um, so I'm in full support of Mont Vernon residents being treated as residents in Amherst for rec department. And I'm in full support of Amherst residents being treated as Mont Vernon residents for Mont Vernon rec department support, so that those rec departments can, can act fluidly together to put on events that serve the communities uh, and deepen the bond that was forged decades ago. That's the, the simple solution. Um, and, and if those rec departments, when they, when they do their math and they figure out how to try to break even on running programs, then they can decide what the common fee is, and they might take into consideration, uh, non-resident fees from people like Bedford, Merrimack, Milford, Hollis, Brookline, New, New Boston, Francis Town, and on and on and on. That's what I'd like to see happen in this. And so to that, I support the work of Dan and Stephen to continue, uh, on, on their path. And I would, I, 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 I can't see it any other way.
So one, one clarification is I think that the reduced fee or no fee that we're talking about is just if it's a Sohegan facility only.
Correct. We're not empowered to deal with any other district.
Yeah.
Of course, we don't have that power. I understand that. But we could inspire, we could, we could suggest, we could lead in that way to forge even a deeper bond between the two communities. You know, I, I don't, I don't, we can't force them, but we can certainly float the idea and have communications. But, uh, a, a, and, and see if there's some, um, interest, uh, among the tow, two towns to, to deepen the bond between the two communities. I'd like to see us inspire them to act in that way. And if they refuse to do so, then I would like to hold the line on the Sohegan facilities, uh, and, and to ensure that Mont Vernon residents are treated equally for the use of those facilities. Because Mont Vernon has a, has a financial interest in, uh, those facilities. They pay into the system and they should be, be able to access it as equally as Amherst residents.
Factor, so in my past life, I was the varsity basketball coach. Partner. I've always wanted the two communities to play together as much as possible from the very beginning. So at Hollis Brookline, it was Hollis Brookline Basketball. Always, and I was very self-serving, because I wanted them to be together, work together by the time I got them. And that was the way we tried to build program was by putting them together as early and do everything we can to make one program for those type of, that's just some experience I had when I was the head of a program and did clinics for the rec and did try to develop a program. I didn't just do it for Hollis, I never did. It was always Hollis and Brookline together. As long, I mean, it was a lifetime ago, but they're going to play together, they're going to be side by side together through this journey, and then up here, what we can do to encourage collaboration, cooperation, togetherness, the better we chance we have at being successful way up here, just a little.
And I don't think, just to preface everything, I don't think any of us are exactly comfortable at this moment. So, so I don't want you to think that I'm like, well, live outside of our town. If the reality is a Mont Vernon student might be different, those students from Merrimack or Bedford, that there might be things we need to look at. What I'm wondering is if the rec department has weighed in on it at all, have they, have they had any interest in having the discussion about waiving the fee for the Mont Vernon students using Sohegan facilities without us putting it in the rental agreement?
Oh, she was, was talking about.
Uh, don't, I can't, I'm sorry, I have to interject there. I, I, you're not speaking for me. I'm very clear in what I think should happen here. I'm not on the edge or concerned about any of this, other than we should, we should do what we can to make this act what he happened.
But, John, John, I'm saying the same thing you're saying, buddy.
Yeah, I think we're all, we all have the same concerns, but just need to make sure that the map works.
We need to understand what the dollar impact is to the rec department, because if we make this decision, it, it affects a governing body that we don't oversee, we have no authority to oversee.
Are we comfortably using our leverage?
Are we comfortable using our leverage, because the Amherst taxpayers can look at us and say, what is that impact? I don't know that dollar, if we could get that dollar impact of how many Mont Vernon students typically use this, if we reduce that fee, what's the actual impact to see what it looks like? I mean, if we're talking, it's only ten kids, that's no big deal.
So.
But if we're talking.
I know that number.
You do.
For the basketball.
Yeah.
Don't laugh. It's three hundred and forty-one.
So has the rec department been at all willing to consider waiving it?
They were, they're, I think they were willing to keep talking, but I think. Board of.
Who says the fees?
The Board of.
Are you sure about that? The Board of Selectmen assess the fees?
Board of Selectmen sent all points.
The, the fees, the individual fees for program?
Who came up with and said, and for the basketball program, that twenty dollars is the out-of-town district charge?
Yeah, I don't think the Board of Select would do that.
I didn't ask that question of Craig, and Craig is leaving.
So here's the thing, when we, when we talk about what is the cost to the town of Amherst? Three hundred and fifty, right, it's three hundred and forty dollars for the basketball program. But the other question is, what is the cost for the town of Amherst? If this school wasn't being made available free to the rec department? Because that would be a way bigger cost to the town of Amherst.
That's not a competition we need to have, because, because we have a whole policy on who can use it, and both towns can use it the same way.
But it is, Christie. And, and this is the part where I respectfully disagree with you. When we take a look at exactly what Anna had said, our policy talks about collaboration and partnership. And when we are in a situation where there's not an equal partnership, because a resident that owns this building is, is not given equal access to the programming at the same dollar amount, that's where, I think that's where you and I may be disagreeing.
I disagree with how we do it.
Yeah.
Not, not whether we do it, but how.
I think, I think from, from, from my perspective, we've got three options here that I'm gonna put on the table, because we've talked about this for quite a while. The option number one is to walk away and say this is not something that's worth doing. Option number two is to go back to the Board of Selectmen and say, hey, we're pretty firm about creating parity and equality for residents of Mont Vernon and access programming in facilities that they own. And we're gonna ask again that they revisit the fee and make it an equal, identical fee. Um, and remove or waive the non-resident fee for programming that uses the facilities inside our business center. The third option is to say, you know what, we wanna recognize that Amherst has overhead, but we're gonna give Mont Vernon residents a fifty percent cut. And that fifteen percent cut is the fifteen percent ownership that they have in this building. And as a result of that, you can continue to use the facilities for free, but you're gonna have to go ahead and use your infrastructure to provide a fifteen percent discount. Because they shouldn't be treated any different from a Merrimack resident, a Hollis resident, a Brookline resident, or a Milford resident, access the same program at the same. So I think those are the three options we have on the table. My personal preference is obviously the parity between both communities, because there's a full subsidy of that. Um, but this is where Dan and I need your direction, because they clearly didn't wanna work with us, they wanted the entire board to have this conversation.
Can I ask a question for Amy's team? I s, I'm, I guess I'm kind of making an assumption that when we look at who are the nonprofit organizations using our facilities, that the leader by far is the Amherst rec department.
Is it most, most?
Yes, yes. I mean, almost everyone else is like a one-off, you're there or something like that.
A couple of tournaments, a couple of events in the year.
Right, right.
Amherst Rec Department is a consistent, insists partner. Um, and, and I think that stems from, you look at the facility where the, the left of the driveway is is our fields, on the right of the driveway coming in is, is the rec fields. So for me, there's a spirit of collaboration between Sohegan High School and Rec Department.
Yep.
And that's, that's substantial. I mean, and that's also another building throughout Amherst too.
I'm not saying we should, you know, I'm not trying to blow that up when I talk about these hypotheticals.
Yeah.
But it, 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 there needs to be a recognition from my perspective on the town's part. I mean, they, the town, the selectmen feel like they're subsidizing the Mont Vernon kids, Mont Vernon kids, because they're, the town's paying the overhead. Or the director and the other things we've talked about. There needs to be recognition of the opposite side of that, that is, Mont Vernon is subsidizing the entire program by making this available for no charge to the Amherst Rec Department. Because if it was like, I don't know, some private sports clubs, we would not have, I don't believe, we would have them in here for free at the same level that the rec department is using these facilities. If someone else was like, hey, by the way, can we come use your gym for free X nights per week? Or, you know, uh, uh, on a regular, ongoing basis, every year for these activities, we'd probably be like, hmm, hmm, that's a problem. Um, so we, we, Sohegan, which includes Mont Vernon, is already subsidizing these programs. And then kind of, so they're, you know, you can say it's a mutual subsid, you know, subsidizing back and forth, but that's the part that I think maybe is getting dropped here.
I think, hmm, maybe I'm way out, well, because I have a totally different solution that you didn't mention of your four. And that is to change our policy, that if you are using a Sohegan facility and a fee is being charged, it needs to be equitable between Amherst and Mont Vernon students, and it has nothing to do with the rental agreement, it's a, it's a policy thing that we work on.
I a thousand percent agree with you and.
And that's fair, no matter who's using it, and it's not at the rec department, it's not anybody, it's just, if you're gonna use the building for free, both groups of students need to be involved in the program at the same price.
But we have to address the contract first, because the contract language in theory is a contract, and the policy language is for, in theory, anybody else. The contract would have a term and an expiration, and so, so the details of the contract have to come.
So I think you would have the policy contract if you're going to go this route.
Draws up a contract and says you pay X, and then I change the rule later, you pay Y, and then all of a sudden, wait, I've got a contract.
The contract doesn't have fees in it, does it?
Yeah, but if we address this in there, from, from a cost.
But we can't, we can't unilaterally change the contract. They can just say what happens.
Right. So I've got something else I wanna get off, and I, I wanna figure out how we're gonna settle this to give you how we're gonna go forward. So if the basketball program is talking three hundred and forty dollars, we spent a lot of time with three hundred and forty dollars.
You're a hundred percent correct.
Now, if.
It's not, I gotta take money, we're talking about the principal.
The principal of it. Um, and then we know there's a rock, rock wall. I'm not sure what other parts of the facility, so even if you're talking, we're talking five hundred dollars. I'm just gonna put that up, but I do understand from a, a taxpayer point of view that Mont Vernon residents coming here aren't paying any part of a rec department overhead. Is there a compromise to say it's just a five dollar fee? Just to help cover the director's fee, the executive fee, the website fee, those sorts of things, but it's not fifteen or something, is that?
But didn't you say there's a breakout where that said as a line item in the fee?
Basically.
Yeah, so he, they, they are paying stuff. And then a little bit more, so that's a little bit.
I could posit an answer to your question, Stephanie.
Yeah.
I don't believe that any programs put on by the rec department cover the costs of the administration of the rec department.
They do.
I don't think so. I think they cover the costs of the specific program that's being offered. That's why the costs for programming are relatively low. We, we have a rec department because we wanna serve our community. Now, maybe we need to get clarification on that with our Board of Selectmen. But I, I, they run a rec department administratively at a cost. The programming that the rec department puts on is intended to cover the costs of the spec, each individual program vis a vis fees, not the administrative overcost. I do not think that any of those costs of, of programming goes into, may I just finish my sentence?
Yeah, 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 no, because I might clarify, and I might agree with you, so hold on a second.
Okay, well, okay.
The fifteen dollar fee, is that baked into every single, the, the, every single person's fee of signing up? Or is that only the?
So if you do the math, it's based on the total people that are participating in the program on that one sheet. The Mont Vernon residents, the seventeen people.
So then everybody's paying that fifteen dollar fee. I thought that was, I thought that was the difference between the resident and non-resident. That's what I was understanding it to be. So everybody's paying a fifteen dollar administrative overhead fee, and Mont Vernon is getting paid an additional thousand.
I think that's right, Anna.
That, that's what the, that, see, I had it wrong on it, so I wanted to clarify, because I under, I was asking, was there fifteen dollar non-resident fee? Then it's not, everyone's paying that fee. All right, so we're spending a lot of time on this.
We, we are, we are, but it's, it's time well spent, because this is a philosophical point that's being made here. And it speaks to the heart of our relationship with Mont Vernon, which strikes to the core of who we are at Sohegan. And leveraging our, that relationship for the betterment of our communities is worthwhile.
And so, John, I completely agree with you, and, and Amy is sick and tired of me saying this over and over again. I apologize. The issue in the big scheme of things is relatively small. The fact that we have to spend the resources to do this, unfortunately, I apologize, all I'm doing is I apologize. Um, but it really is about equitable experiences for people in both of our communities who leverage and utilize the facilities that we both own. And there has to be some sort of recognition of that. And right now, there's zero, zero. And when I go back to Mont Vernon and I ask, please pass a budget for this place, please embrace us for changes that we wanna do, we wanna hire a new social studies teacher, wanna go ahead and buy a new van, we wanna support the, the scoreboard that I voted no on. Right? All of those things. And they see this constantly being thrown in their face of, you're not an equal partner, because programming is not equitable. It's just, it's an issue that we as a board have to address. And this can go down many different paths. I wanna keep it simple, I'm gonna keep it civil. I know the Board of Selectmen are coming at us from a proper place. They work very hard to do what they do. The rec department does a phenomenal job. Craig has done a great job offering programming to residents of Amherst. This issue is above that because it comes down to programmers offered in this building, and the owner of the building is being charged a different cost because of where they live.
But is the lease up?
The lease is, it was up when we voted to.
But when we, we, we say we're gonna revisit it, I mean, it's like, it's got an expiration date from that.
I think two more years in addition to this, so we're gonna keep that for leasing. I'd have to go back to the actual document. But we revoked it, and so it's, it's expired, because we voted to say, hey, we're opening up, uh, talks to, to, to do it.
Okay. I couldn't remember, was it, we're voting now, that it would be up at some future time. Could we go talk to the new director and the Board of Selectmen, and I'm happy to come along?
So we, we've been told we have to work through the town administrator. And, um.
Can I go make a?
We, we have.
Public speech at the Board of Selectmen meeting, I mean, there's.
Yeah, sure. This conversation was held in nonparticular.
We have a scheduled meeting on the.
We have a scheduled meeting with the town administrator, and so the schedule that Dan and I presented was that we would come up with an idea tonight, presented to them in writing to respond back to their, uh, their idea. And then we would meet hopefully on the twelfth to, um, finalize, so we can speed this along. Uh, this is not something that we ever expected to be spending a year.
Um. It seems like maybe it's educated, like, but Mont Vernon is subsidizing your program already. We gotta figure out where we all stand first.
I'd like to make a motion on this, on the, on the topic. I, I, I move that this board supports the proposition that Mont Vernon residents shall be treated as Amherst residents for rec department of activities held on Sohegan Cooperative School District facilities equally.
John, as much as I'd like to second that motion, I can't support it, because I don't think we're at that point. I think we're at a point now where we're trying to counter their offer of doing nothing. And so when Dan and I go back, I would like to go back and say that I've got the board's support um, to pursue the parity and equality of, of fees. Um, to pursue the parity and equality of, of fees for programming that uses this facility. And then if we don't, then we're going to be in a situation where we're going to have to leverage, uh, our, um, our cost structure. And do we assess a fifteen percent, um, of our rental agreement to go ahead and recover the cost from all modern residents? Like, no one wants to go down that path, we just don't.
But that's the same result, that's the same result, it's just a different path. I mean, I, I guess, Stephen, listen, you, maybe you should make the motion, because I. You, you, we, the, the Board of Selectmen, it sounds like at the beginning of this, wants a direction from this governing body. As to what we think about their thoughts. And so therefore, a motion is in order. Now, what that motion says, I mean, I'd like it to be as you would like it to be. Is a hundred percent equitable. Uh, uh, no barrier between the two communities with, with, and to Christie's point, within the ambit of our authority, which is the Sohegan facilities. You know, I'd also like to inspire you and Dan to, uh, uh, inspire the, uh, uh, other governing bodies to get a memorandum of understanding. Between them that, that we're just going to erase that barrier for all, uh, Rec Department activities. And, and by the way, three hundred and seventy-one participants in the basketball program, that's not just students. There's adult basketball leads, the, these are, these are adults as well as students who are participating in these recreation department programs. And I'd like to see our communities deepen our relationship with one another, and, and if that, you know, and advocating for that. I'd like to, to, this board to, to, you, you could go into a, a meeting and say, our board supports, uh, a, a, a more equitable. So, uh, relationship between the two communities for recreational facilities, and this is what their motion said very powerfully, very unambiguous. Um, and very deep, and very in the spirit of deepening our relationship with one another. So, you know, maybe we can craft some, some, some motion to that effect. I'd like to see us move and approve such a motion.
If you are rescinding your motion, Mr. Glover, I would like to make the motion that we refer policy KF back to the policy committee. To add some language around. The fees charged to Mont Vernon or Amherst residents. By organizations that aren't renting this facility at no cost as part of a community situation, that's not the right language. But I think that's the right way, I think that's where we have the power to do that, to say, if we give you this building for free, then we expect this is how it's going to work.
I, I, I agree with you, and my next step in my personal process was to propose formal policy change to Dan and John to bring back after we're done with this contract. That basically says something to that, that effect, and basically recognized that a fee is charged for any programming offered on Sohegan property. That it have equitable access and identical costs associated with Amherst.
We need to change the policy first, whatever the.
So I think contract, first of all, you could reference, if you think policy KF is the right one, just reference that, subject to policy KF. Then if you change policy KF, you're still subject to policy KF. The other thing is, not having a contract is not to our detriment right now, right? Like, we're, we're fine, if, we're the ones who can say, you can't come here tomorrow, so I don't think we're in a hurry, unless I'm wrong, do we need to sign a contract in a hurry?
I think for budgetary reasons, I think it's respectful for us to at least get something solidified, so as they're going through their town admin process, and that they need to recover the three hundred and forty dollars from another source. That they have the opportunity to actually use. So.
Could I weigh in on that? I, I, I respectfully disagree with the policy process. We are in the middle of a, a, a notional, not a notional, sorry. A conceptual. Understanding of who we are and what we're, how we're going to operate together. This, if we, if changing policy is after the fact, that's, that's a, that's an arduous, that's an arduous, it's, it's a time-consuming process. And then what are we going to say? The same thing that we, we can say right now? We, we either believe in the equitable treatment of, of residents of both towns for the Sohegan facilities, or we don't. We could, we should need to make a statement to that effect, so that when Dan and Stephen go back and say, we have the support of our board to. To, uh, to, um, to achieve an equitable result, uh, in these discussions, that's, that's where things are moving. That's, that's where the, the action is right now. Sending this to policy committee and waiting weeks and weeks and weeks is just going to stymie Dan and, and Stephen in their efforts. We, we need to, we need to, we need to say what we believe should happen as a result. We don't have to prescribe a, a, a method, but we should say what we believe should be the result, tonight, right now, with a motion that speaks to that effect. And that's what my motion was designed to do, and I did not resent my motion.
So one, I think we should be revising the policy also, so that it applies to other people. I mean, I think, I think that's, right, two things that can happen at the same time. I think we still need to continue the conversation with the Rec Department, because otherwise it feels like kind of just an end run around them. Like you said, no, fine, we're going to go do it unilaterally, and I don't like the way that feels.
I agree.
Um, so, you know, I don't know.
They are partners, and I want to make that very clear.
Yeah, right.
Try to circumvent any of their.
Yeah, because, you know, they've put together a budget, that actually they're presenting to the taxpayers just like we are. That they were probably looking at certain revenue coming in, and if we're going to impact it by some amount. This is.
Yeah, so if there's not a second, logistically, if there's not a second to John's motion, what happens?
I'll, I'll make another motion that this board reaffirm our position of creating equitable access to programming offered in the Sohegan campus. And, uh, authorizing Dan and I to further engage in conversations about, um. Having equitable access to that programming from a fee cost standpoint. And, um, reaffirm the sports positions for the neutrality of these difference between both towns.
I second the motion.
Don't make me repeat all.
Danae, you got it all, hopefully.
So, are we in discussion now?
Yes, yes. If policy can just take it, I don't think we need a motion for policy to do it, you guys are on, your policy, you know.
That would be a separate motion.
Right.
We have questioning discussion if everybody's good.
Yeah.
If, if the, if you two go and you have a conversation with the Rec Department, with the town administrator, who we talked to, and they say, oh, yes, we see your point, the town, the administrative fee is baked in here. We absolutely, gentleman's agreement, think we should do this. Are we good then to go with our contract that we've always had, and then work on our policy to get it fair across the board? Or are we continuing to leverage our contract?
I believe we need to make sure it's spelled out in the contract.
I would.
I agree with Stephen.
Sorry, that was recorded. I would, I, I'm sorry, I'm, I, I think that for me, I would like, want to have a person from the Rec Department, or somebody, or a statement or something, to say this is a collaborative drafting. I'm uncomfortable with leveraging, like, building our power through contracts. That's all I'm going to say about it.
They seem perfectly comfortable to be negotiating back. I mean, I don't, you know, so maybe, it was, no. I mean, so it's not like they, you know, I, I, I'm not. I guess the, I think the whole motion, motion, as I'm understanding it, is to continue a discussion, not to go back with a hammer and say it's this for, right now. It's like, look, we got to do this in a fair way, go continue that discussion, our board fully supports us in this regard.
Yeah, yeah, this is.
Yeah.
Yes, I agree with Anna. The spirit of Stephen's motion is to give them the confidence, Stephen, Stephen and Dan, the confidence to go back and say, no, actually. We, our board wants a result that has, that, that at the end of the day is an equitable treatment between the two communities, so let's continue the conversation. That's what, basically what Stephen was saying, that's what I heard. And if that's the spirit of that motion, then I'm in full support of it, and we don't, we need no further discussion from me on that point.
Well, yeah. All right, John?
Mr. Glover.
Glover, yes.
Mr. Bayou.
Davis.
Lisa Zimmerman, yes.
Peter's abstaining.
Take a position, Kristy. Brian, yes.
O'Keefe, yes.
I would like to have one answer, if we can know what the impact is from removing the fee. Like, if they looked at this current pack, this current year, last year, whenever, if we can know what that dollar amount, I'd appreciate that as well. Like, if we moved the fee from basketball, from climbing, from whatever, just looked at that, like, I understand.
We can ask again, just put it up, you can ask again.
They got to know who was, um, hopefully they can. That would be my one request, because I want to make sure we're not impacting something that we don't have.
And I would ask one request too, with, with a question.
Wait, yes, yes.
Yes, okay.
I, I would, I would like you, uh, Stephen and Dan to ask another question, if I, if I could get it in, which is. Yeah, yeah, I, I get it, I get it, um, which is, uh, how would this decision affect the flexibility of the Rec Department? To, to, to be nimble in, in having facilities to put on events? You know, is it sometimes, a Sohegan basketball court, for example, and then, oh, 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 sometimes it's, it's, you know, uh, AMS. Court, or, you know, is, is the flexibility that they enjoy, uh, uh, meaningful for them or not? Because right now, it seems like they have free range. Oh, you already know the answer, okay.
What is the answer? Take that offline, and Dan can talk to you about that, because we asked that question when, uh, Dan and I.
Okay, all right, that's a fair point. Our community might know, but we can, we can put that into the record, uh, maybe at another day, if we need to move on, I suppose.
All right. All right, thank you. Um, science lab project update, there is a brief note in there, um, where we met. Um, myself. Mr. Glover, Mr. O'Keefe, Mr. Preston, Mr. Barry, Spaskin, McCarthy, um, to work with, yeah, and. Mr. Chamberlain.
Yeah.
He was there.
I was there.
We developed, uh, some, the idea of working with Harriman, it says in here, the scope includes meetings with administration, science faculty, community steering committee. Um, making sure we're doing the right project in the right place, that is very important to us. Um, Stephen or John, do you want to add anything to that?
It's good, I, the, the only thing I'm going to add is that some of the estimates that Roger provided are quite high. And, um, we just need to be very cognizant of, the community can't absorb a big hit like that. Uh, and so when we work with Harriman and, and our faculty and try to design the, the proper facilities, we need to be very cognizant of a big project.
The right project.
Will probably not pass, and we need to be hyper-aware of, 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 of that, that particular issue.
No. We agree.
So, a quick follow-up, um, um, we met with Harriman, we described the scope, they're going to spend. Scope, Roger, as you said, is very experienced, I feel very good about his ability to, this is the right size, right shape, with the right cost, that's all. So, we'll have a proposal from Harriman at the end of next week.
Okay.
I, I just would add, for the record, um, some, some, some things that I agreed with, with, uh, in our meeting. Um, Steve Chamberlain said, um, something to the effect of, now, we need, we're looking at, you know, more longer-range thinking. I agree with that. Uh, Roger had said, well, we might need to review the science program first. I agree with that. Um, in order, and then he went on to say, uh, that that will enable us to develop a scope. I agree with that, and Stephen O'Keefe mentioned that, that this needs to be looked at from a community perspective, and I also agree with that. So I'm encouraged why, where this is going. I, I think that there's some, 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 some work, some homework for us to do in reviewing our. Programming relative to, uh, a modern science program, relative to our master schedule, relative to our current. Uh, assets and what our science department believes we might need for a, um, you know, a current, a, a modern, uh, science programming. Whether that's in life sciences or potentially other areas. And once we have that homework done, then we can sit down and really have a conversation and, and, and help Harriman. Um, um, understand what we really need. And along that path, Harriman was going to, was going to be invited to, uh, those discussions, and that we're going to learn with us as we do our homework. And, um, I'm, I'm happy that they're going to be a part of that process, that they can hear firsthand what it is that we're thinking about, and what we know, what we don't know. And they can help us fill in some gaps, and as, and one of the reasons why we selected them was because that's part of their approach, is to work deeply with. With, uh, with us to figure this thing out. So I'm very optimistic about, uh, where we're going at this point.
Great, thank you. Um, so yeah, so we'll keep everyone updated as, as things move on. Uh, board goal updates, the, so one of the things we want to address here, uh, it was something Mr. Glover brought up last year that we all said, wait, it was too last minute, we weren't comfortable talking about. But it does fall under one of our Sohegan goals about communication. Um, and the, uh, the, the idea that was brought up was about a candidate statements in the voter guides. So, Mr. Glover, would you like to present the ideas, we have time to discuss it this year?
Uh, sure. Um, yes, I, I had mentioned last year that I would like to see candidate statements in the voter guide. Um, and the reason, the, the primary reason for this is because we, if you look at the voting numbers. You see a big under vote for candidates relative to the propositions, to the warrants. And, um, I think that's because it's really hard for a, for a voter to find any information about who the candidates are. And yet, the voter guide includes superintendent's letter. Board chair letter, finance advisory committee letter, all in support of where we are and who we are, and that, those all feed into all the warrants. But then at the back of the voter guide is a sample ballot. And on the sample ballot are the candidates included among those things, and there's no support for any of that. So it would be a very helpful community service for us to allow. Enable candidate statements, if they chose, to write their own statement. And, and highlight their strengths, and, and, and provide their reasons why they're running. And maybe provide a website or something else where people could get more information. Um, uh, Milford does this, uh, other communities do this, our federal government recommends that this is a good idea for voter engagement and, and voter, voter, uh. Uh, awareness. And my theory, I don't have numbers at this point, but the cost of, of printing, a few extra pages, and an already relatively thick voter guide would be negligible to the taxpayer. And there will be some cost, but that cost would have value for the taxpayer, because it would be informing them of their voting choice. Choices, and, um, we could have more participation from our voters for our candidates as much as we do for our propositions.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, comments?
I have a question, I guess for Ms. Batesy. Um, how many of these guides do we print? Just roughly, the one-inch household, probably, yeah.
Yeah, six thousand, seven thousand, probably.
Four hundred households in Amherst, twenty-five.
Are you at seven, that's about right. And see, no, no.
About sixty-five.
It's a twenty-five hundred residents in them, in.
Residents, yeah.
No, it's not for household, it's, it's per registered voter. I mean, we get two.
No, it's not, no.
We don't get one.
Because it's so much. Mass mailing by, by, by residents.
Printing a home company who works with the.
There must be a snafu in the system, because we get two, so, okay, maybe that's something to look at.
But the bottom line is, the rough number, since I've done a lot of printing this week, is like, we're talking about like five or six hundred bucks. So if, if we use like two pages to do it.
Yeah, so, so that's one of the discussions, it wouldn't be about.
I certainly do not know how much it is. It's more than, of more than two pages. All right, so we're somewhere between six hundred and six thousand dollars.
I did.
Oh, no.
So, it's in the thousands, it's, if not.
Yeah. So can you, can we check before the next meeting on what the cost would be per additional page?
And then, well, we have to put it in the SAE budget before we're going to vote on it, if we're going to make the SAE pay for it.
No, but he can pay.
Oh, so he can do his print, oh.
If he can pay for it, so part of it is, we would have to say, would we give, if we were going forward with this, would. If he can pay for it. So part of it is, we would have to say, would we give, if we were going forward with this, would you give candidate just half a page? Again.
I think you have a certain number of characters, yeah. And it might not even be a half a page.
So if you say you have four or five candidates, you're talking front and back of one page.
If you had six, if you had six candidates, okay, which we, I don't know that, I mean, I can't remember the last time there were six candidates. That would be three additional pages, right? One on each page, one and a full page for each. That's three additional pages.
I think you could do a third of the page for you.
Okay, well, that's short shrift. I mean, it may be to your point, Anna, it's like, what is the cost per page? I would like to give them a canvas to put the views out there.
I mean, and if the whole idea is like.
I mean, superintendent's letter is a page. I'm sorry.
John, let me finish real quick. If, if you, if the whole idea, what I heard you say before is a little bit, is who I am, this is why I'm running, these are things I care about. And here's where you can go to learn more about me, then you don't need an entire page for that. No one does. And, and, and it. Otherwise, yeah, it's almost like a phone book ad at the end of the thing, you know, like, we don't want pictures and all that. It's a statement, just like.
And some issues and that's it.
Yeah.
So this is being done in other towns, to be honest with you. There, there, Milford does it themselves. I, I can say that lots of things we're hearing because we've lost the emperor's citizen and we've lost a lot of things, there's people are not finding out about voters at all. So it might be an opportunity for us to help communicate out to the public a bit, but how, what type of limitations will be put on if we were, so I just want to hear.
And I guess we're.
Could I weigh in on that a little bit? When it's my turn, when it's my turn. Sorry for the talking over people. It's, it's, it's a little challenging on Zoom to know who's talking when. So give me some grace on that. I'd appreciate it. I'm not trying to step on anybody's toes. But I have a, I have a comment about that, limitations. I, I would like us to embrace the concept and move forward with enabling that. And, and spin out the limitations, maybe at another meeting. We don't have to make this decision with all the limitations tonight. And we already had a lengthy conversation about the facilities thing. I, I'm just looking for support from the board to say, you know what? This is a good idea. This is going to serve our community. We believe the costs are negligible. We can get some information about costs. We can have a discussion about the limitations. I have an opinion about that. I, I think it should be a page, but that's my opinion. We can, we can hash all the details out later. I just would like us to, to. Embrace the concept and enable it to happen with whatever limitations we all agree upon as a majority at the end of the day, when it, when, when, when we have to make that decision. That's what I'm really kind of looking for tonight.
Let me get other opinions. Mr. Babe, you have any opinions?
I, I support doing it, but I, with limitations, I don't know. Definitely not giving somebody a platform for manifesto.
Senator, do you have any?
Only that I'm looking at one of the old voter guides and there's an awful lot on a page. So I'm, I'm happy to continue the discussion. But I mean, it's, it's not like we're talking giant print. Someone's doing a single line for a whole half a page. That seems to me to be more than enough to get across the basics of who you are and where someone can find information.
Ms. Fears, what do you have?
I support broader information to the public. I'm not sure I am ready to give up thousands of dollars from our budget.
I, I will say there's gonna, there will need to be some. Some coordination with our office and the voter guide. They'd have to have a deadline period if it's not. Work. And so we're going to have to be really clear on deadlines and not able to wait for, you know, and coordinating.
I don't think it would have helped the, the shipping, the mailing costs.
No.
You know, and it'd probably be a fraction of a penny per page.
Yeah.
I, I don't.
Four thousand copies.
You have a really cheap printer. Um, I, my other question. Oh, the God. Left the station. Oh. It, what impact would it have? Like if we make this decision right now, we're taking money out of the Sohagen budget. Where are we taking it from for March?
What we need to find out.
Like I wanted to know that before I said yes.
I don't think we should discuss that.
Next, next meeting. Yeah, no, give or.
We can gather some more information.
More for looking up information, that's what I was trying to.
Gather some more information.
Yeah, I get more information, but I just wouldn't think about how this.
Information piece.
It's a big deal. It's always really tight getting these out and we have, we have to have them mailed out so that they get to voters just a week prior, so it's not, say, involved. So I personally agree, yeah. So we just have to be careful that if someone misses the deadline, then they miss the done. I mean, that's going to be something very clear if we go forward with this.
Yeah.
Very, so.
I, I agree with that and I respect that a lot, Amy. I just, sorry for waving my hand. I see you.
Sorry, I have not heard from Mr. O'Keefe yet. I just want to.
Okay, apologies.
Any different from the last time? I'm not supportive of that. I think there's many opportunities for people running for office to get their messaging out there. Whether it be online, whether it be by buying and adding a newspaper or, you know, going to the library or meeting in community, you know, living rooms or, and stuff like that. I, I think once we go down the path of putting in candidate messages in our official guide, we run the risk of then trying to quote unquote, edit what they're saying. If we find it to be inappropriate speech and then we have issues there and it just, it's a very slippery slope. And I think there's better things that our district is spending our time on than, than trying to do this that.
As a follow-up, Steve just said too, if someone misses our deadline and they don't get their little blurb in, did we accidentally endorse someone?
Yeah, and then they say, well, I was there and somebody left them in it early and it's just, it's a really.
I think any candidate would have their spot. It would just say they. Had submitted.
Could I, could I, could I respectfully disagree with, with Stephen? I, I, listen, you know, a candidate, a candidate has to, there's a deadline. And it's supportive of what Amy was saying. A candidate has to put their name in the hat by a deadline, like 5:00 PM on a date certain. If they don't do that, they're not a candidate. I mean, that's just, that's. Well, they're not, they're not an official candidate. They could, they could lodge a, a, a write-in campaign, but they're not going to be in the voter guide. I mean, you know, you know, if you're serious people. Wait, wait, now somebody's, wait, 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 now somebody's interrupting me. I'm sorry, I'm trying to be respectful on the whole communications thing and I apologize, Zoom is difficult. Okay, okay. You know, serious, real people, I mean, you have to attest when you put your name on, 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 sign up to be a candidate during the registration period. You know, I think one of the concerns you had raised last year, Stephen, was like, people might be using pseudonyms or something, but this is, this, that's not. That's not this, 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 you have to be a real person who has to be a resident. You attest to it on penalty of perjury when you sign your name on, on, on a registration form to become a candidate. People don't, we just, this is not a problem that we have. The problem we have is the voters don't know who the people are. And, and it takes a lot of time. You see a ballot with names, especially the town, like, like all this stuff. Now, we don't have control of the town, to Christie's point earlier, we, we can't, but maybe we can inspire other governing bodies to do something similar to help the voters. Figure out who the hell these people are. And, and we know, what do we get? You know, two, you know, sometimes one, two, three, four, five, I mean, four, maybe. Candidates running for a couple of positions. I mean, this is our history, right? So, you know, if we have a problem, if, if we, if, if we do this, I, I would, I would say this to Stephen, if we do this and it becomes a, 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 an S show. Because people come out of the woodwork like, oh my God, I got a platform now and I can, you know, crap all over the system and it like, oh my God, you know, an unanticipated result. Okay, let's, let's come back to the table and have further discussion, but, but based on our history. I mean, i- it's, it's a real people, serious people, trying to, trying to do better by, good by their community, putting their names out there, their real names. You know, and, and making a play for it. So giving them a, a page with, I mean, I forget about the limitations. I don't want to go there. Giving them a, a, a space in the voter guide to, to, to lay out who they are, their experience, whatever they want to tout, their experience, their work experience, their education, their commitment to the serve, community service, their ideas for the future. Hold on, hold, hold on.
I know, but.
Why, why am I getting cut off and nobody else? It's really fucking, sorry, sorry. It's just aggravating. Why am I getting cut off? Other people have been speaking so long about so many things. May I please, out of respect, mutually, finish the, the thought. I, I'm not going to go on and on forever. Okay. Thank you. Serious people are going to, yes.
So what, at least what I'm, I'm hearing, there seems to be some interest in finding out. If, if there's a way, Amy, to find out the cost to print, let's say if we give everyone half, let's say two extra pages, so the front and back of two extra pages. So let's say, one, two, three, four, five, so we give up to, up to eight candidates. So it would be, let's say up to two extra pages, what would that cost look like?
Looking at the logistics and timelines.
And then if we have that information, then we can make a quick.
Well, we just need to know the cost per page, Stephanie. Cost per page, that'll help us and inform us about what our limitations are. You could, if it was a full page, you could have two candidates for one page. If, if it was a high cost per page, then maybe it's four candidates per one page, two on each side. I don't know.
We just asked Amy to find that out, if that's all right. If you want to just point out that one, that putting in your name to run for candidate is different than submitting your profile for the voter guide, correct? And I'm just saying for the record, because there seem to be some, if people don't do it early enough, then they're not a candidate. Obviously, they're still a candidate, they just don't get their entry in the voter.
Correct. Correct. It's an obligation on the candidate to submit their, their statement on time. Absolutely. And it's also an obligation on the candidate to not violate, you know, First Amendment restrictions. I mean, they can criticize stuff, but they can't threaten people. I mean, we're not, we can't, we can't allow, I mean, you know. Yes, that's limitations and we can, and we can talk about limitations at the next meeting.
Thank you. Personnel, so there's some information on personnel. Is there anything we need to do in non-public or this seems like it'd be okay to do in public?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's okay to do.
Would you?
Appreciate it. Yeah, so if you, we have two things that we'd like to do in regards to personnel this evening. First, Hampshire Education has changed the process to employ someone under emergency authorization. It's now driven at the local level with state approval. I think this is a reflection of, you know, highway practices and pools and people getting into education. So it's at the local level. So we're hoping the board tonight to approve a motion authorizing the designation of one-year certification of eligibility. Authorization for a long-term, you know, science sub, Britta Stacy. And business teacher Kelly Crowell, I know Mrs. Crowell's in the final year of working under this credential. And that would be the first motion. Have some conversation if there's questions about that.
So can I have that motion to approve? The designation of one-year certificate of eligibility authorization for long-term sub, science teacher Britta Stacy and business teacher Kelly Crowell.
Salute.
Second, second. Any discussion?
Discussion, is this, how does this affect budget? Mike, is this, this, this is positive for the budget, right? Because we're paying a sub as opposed to a, someone, no, this is negative to the budget because we're paying someone who's on leave for some reason. And now we are paying for a sub to fill in? Like, what's the budget impact?
So, so John, it's a, it's a maternity leave for the science and it's a, it's a, it's a business teacher who's already employed.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to understand. I, I'm likely to support it because it's an identified need. You're the subject matter expert in there, you and Dana, so. Go in with your flow.
Okay. Any other conversation? Let's take a, a roll call vote, Mr. Glover.
Glover, yes.
Please, Herman, yes.
Peter, yes.
Friend, yes.
All right, and the second one, you guys were able to see the materials via email regarding Kimberly May as an English teacher. And I was hoping to get a, to replace Infum and I was hoping to get a motion to approve the nomination of Kimberly May as an English teacher as presented.
Moving to approve Kimberly May as an English teacher as presented.
Second. Right, in conversation. All I'm going to say is, very exciting background from the looks of it, where timing looks good that she's moving into.
Timing is everything.
Yeah. Yeah.
Echo what Stephanie said. And chop, and chops to Amy Facy, she's the one who brought echo into our parlance.
Awesome. All right, roll call vote. Mr. Glover.
Glover, yes.
Please, Herman, yes.
Peter, yes.
Friend, yes.
All right. Excellent. Anything else on hiring?
Nope, that is it, personnel.
Superintendent updates. Anything?
Yeah, so just, just a couple of quick things. Yeah, we are prepared for the election on November 5th, just, just a reminder. We don't have school in session, but we have parent teacher conferences of staff and parents will be here. Just wanted to make sure people knew that. And then, long-term planning, we just had a conversation last week at the SAU. We didn't put it on the agenda, but we are continuing to, to work on that, you know, internally, there'll be an agenda item on the next SAU 39 meeting in, in November. But then in Sohagen's agenda in early December. I just want to give a heads up that we'll continue on with that. And that is it for superintendent updates. Unless there's any questions.
Any questions?
The only thing, just to point out, the election staff, it's custodian setting up all that equipment.
I, I have, I have a question. Well, it's more of a comment about the SAU long-term planning update, which is. I just want to make this statement. I, I do not understand why the committee meetings are private and not public. And maybe that's a conversation for the SAU board level, but that's odd to me for such a meaningful. Process that we're endeavoring to, to get right. Over a very short period of time, you know, coming up with something in February where the members of the public can't dial into a Zoom or attend a meeting. And have minutes and all the rest of it as a public meeting. So that everyone, I mean, the strategic planning is supposed to include every, everyone's thoughts on the matter. And, and, and it's such a small committee and if meetings are being held in private is confusing to me and concerning to me. I don't get it. And I'd like, I'd like, I don't, I don't know what I'd like. I'd like them to be public at least. So that people, if they're interested, can, can participate and that there are minutes so that people can review afterwards, what are we doing? What are our think, what are we thinking? What, what, what's on the cutting room floor? What, what's going forward? What's not going forward? Well, you know. It's, the, the, the beginning of this, this is the nascent sea of this and, and, and how, what directions and options we're faced with should be. Available to our public to, to offer their feedback along the way, should they choose to participate in that process.
Okay, noted, but I, I think it's an SAU discussion, John?
Yeah, probably. I, I needed to get that into the record though.
Any, any questions for Mr. Barry? If not, we'll go into public input session two of two. If there is anybody here in our room that would like to add a public comment. Don't see him coming forward. Is anyone online?
Two people are online, but no hands up.
Anyone? Interested? No, don't see them raising their hand? Okay, then can I have a motion to go into non-public under 91A32C? I guess that could, so second by the school leader, man, can a roll call vote, Mr. Glover?
Glover, yes.
He is.
Peter, yes.
Friend, yes.
EPS.
Okay. All right, non-public starts at P11. Ish.